Appendix A. The first is for the Director of Testing and Accountability. I am sorry to hear that Ms. Karen Green, who took over that role, is retiring. I'd like to just publicly thank her. She took an apartment that was in disarray and has made it into something that to be proud of. So I want to thank you for that work. But I'm equally pleased to announce a replacement, who has worked alongside her for many years, and that is Elizabeth Murray, who serves as the Evaluation and Research Analyst and Testing. Previously served as an Assistant Principal at Williston, Lead Teacher in Secondary Ed, teacher with the Hanover County Schools, and as a middle grades math consultant with DPI. She has a Bachelor's Degree in Middle Grades Education and a Master's Degree in Curriculum and Instruction from UNCW, and she received her Doctorate in Education and Leadership from East Carolina University in Greenville. So it is my pleasure to recommend Dr. Elizabeth Murray.
Do I hear a motion from a board?
Second.
Do I hear a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is approved.
Dr. Murray is here. Please stand and tell us who you brought with you.
My name is Chris Murray and my mother, Tempe Fuller, who's a retired teacher, has other friends and family colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our second recommendation is for the Supervisor of Accounts Payable. That'll be Mr. Daniel Price, who is currently an Operations Compliance Manager with the Federal Home Loan of Pittsburgh. Family is relocating here and we're going to be the beneficiary of that relocation. Served as a Supervising Analyst before with Validation Center in Highmark. He received his Bachelor's Degree in Finance and Management Accounting from the University of Pittsburgh, a Master's Degree in Forensic Accounting, and a BA in Business Administration from DeKane University in Pittsburgh.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is approved.
I don't believe Mr. Price made it tonight because he is still up in Pittsburgh. His wife is the one who actually got the relocation and he's coming along and it worked out well. Mary Hazel, anything you want to add to that?
All right. Is that it for...
That's for the new recommendations.
Okay.
I would ask, under Administrative Contract Renewals, that we approve the Administrative Contract Renewal List as amended.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is approved. Moving on to item number eight, Head Start.
I just want people to know that, you know, this, the work Shannon does for our Head Start program, if you look at where a government can put money and get efficacy, get some serious results, Head Start is example one, two, and three. It works, and it works because of the educators that serve our students and because of the work that this woman puts in. It is absolutely extraordinary, and I just want to publicly recognize it. She deserves everything she gets. So, thank you so much for what you do for us.
I have to say that Direct Services, a big shout-out to them, and that's Dr. Karen McCarty. She's my Partner in Crime with Exviditing the Services and the Federal Government Rules and Regulations, and she does it with lots of glitter on top of it. So hats off to her. Thank you.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Moving on to the New Hanover County Head Start Monthly Report. If you look, we are showing for the period ending 3/31, and I just want to reemphasize that, that we're always a month behind. So what you're going to get in next month's report is a preliminary measure of true cost, and then in July, we will have a closeout budget and hopefully a new budget. You have 120 three-year-olds enrolled currently, 144-year-olds enrolled. If you look at our expenditure reports, and again, please keep in mind that we are a month behind, you have, let's see, most of our salaries and benefits are what typically eats our costs, but we are well-positioned and well-projected to be right where we need to be at the end of the year, thanks to the work of all of our great staff. They had a fun day this month. I'm told it was really, really well-participated. I mean, the attendance there was through the roof, couldn't find parking. We're doing some really great things, and again, I just want to thank the people who serve our students at Head Start. It's a great program, and we look to do great things with it moving forward. Any questions from my fellow board members?
How's the recruiting for next year going, Ms. Miles?
Thank you, Dr. Markley. Transitioning of all of our three-year-olds into our four-year-old program. Letters have been sent out. We've received close to 502 applications for next year. We will have 875 slots, and keep in mind, not all qualifying applications, but we're quite pleased. We've got to switch our hats and get geared up for next year so that our schools get these enrollment folders in a timely manner. Thank you.
How is teacher retention?
To the best of my knowledge, we're doing very well.
Good.
So, we provide lots of great support, and they're under the umbrella of the school system, so it's just a great, a great piece to be under.
My, one of my daughters had the opportunity to intern at Johnson, and she was, she said it was a lot harder than she thought it was going to be to do a lesson plan.
She came home tired.
Do what?
Came home tired.
Came home tired, and then got there frazzled because she was, you know, having to do kind of lesson plans and figure it all out, and she did something with cars and road safety, and she was panic-stricken the night before trying to figure it out. So it's a lot to think about how to plan for that age group.
They're busy.
Yeah, it's really amazing.
It's what we're here for.
Before you leave, you can do an onsite walkthrough until May 24th.
Yes.
You want to talk a little bit about that?
By May...
And I encourage every board member to do it.
So, thank you for that. So we are ready to launch our self-assessment for the end of the year. So we welcome community members and board members. Dr. McCarty and her front office has a self-assessment comprehensive survey, and you do a walkthrough, and it takes a snapshot of parent involvement, our welcoming environment, and kind of reflects on what kind of services we're doing with childcare regulations and with Head Start regulations. So it's quick, and it would be a great opportunity to go take a peek. Thank you very much.
I recommend we all do it. I'm going to be doing it. Of course, I have more free time. I've got to be done. Practice retirement for professors.
Our due date, we would like to see that happen before May 24th, but of course, at your convenience. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for that, Mr. Bullard and Ms. Miles. Item number nine, Information, Item A, Policies for First Reading. Ms. Jeanette Nichols.
Thank you. We have four policies for consideration tonight. The first one, Policy 1235, I'm going to ask Mr. Bullard if he'll explain it, but I want you to think about this very carefully because I'm going to ask you to waive first reading so that we can put this policy in place so that it's effective whenever we soon will need it.
Thank you, Ms. Nichols. The policy change is to slightly change the way in which the Board appoints its representatives on the Cape Fear Community College Board of Trustees. For those that don't know, the Cape Fear Community College Board of Trustees is a 13-member board, and by statute, this Board of Education gets to appoint four of those board members. They're for staggered terms of four years each, so each year, one person comes up for renewal. And the change would allow the Board to reappoint an incumbent board member without interviewing additional candidates if requested by the Cape Fear Board and the Cape Fear Community College President. In situations where that request is not made, then the policy would say that the, that this school board should advertise the vacancy, take applications, and interview the applicants. So the change is to allow the Board to dispense with the process of re-advertising and/or advertising and interviewing candidates when they have a candidate in place who is already serving. The Board was interested in reappointing that candidate, and the Cape Fear Board and President both request that the Board reappoint that person.
Is the purpose of waiving, asking for it to be waived, is that because there is that situation about to arise?
Yes.
Okay, do we have...
I don't think I can answer that question. I prepared the change, but it wasn't at my recommendation. So other board members would have to answer that question for you, Ms. Justice.
Well, yes, we do have a situation where we are due to appoint a board member to the Cape Fear Board of Trustees.
We just went through the approval process three months ago. Is that right?
Correct. But to me, this was all about, about looking long-term. You know, how do we want to establish communication pattern? Which just so happens, we have the President of Cape Fear Community College here, which is great. But, you know, how do we want to establish that communication pattern? We certainly want to make sure that we are allowing the Board of Trustees and the President and the college to operate as smoothly and efficiently as possible. And so, and then, serving in my position on the State Board of Community Colleges, I know that we are the only Board of Education that actually does interviews. So there is no other board around the state that does this interview process. So what I'm hoping to do with how we do it is present this to our State Board to be pushed out to other boards, because I think it's an important process to have that communication with the college. You want to make sure that the college can do what it needs to do with the trustees that it has, so...
How long do they have? Is it four years or two years?
Four years.
So, in theory, if one were to be appointed, like, three months in, if three years down the line, it was time to go through the process again, if the Chairperson of Cape Fear Community College said that they wanted to go through this, they would bypass us and they could keep him on?
They could ask us to.
If the President and the Board of Trustees both say, hey, this trustee is, they both request yes, then that we would, they would like them to stay on, then, the way this is worded, then, then we could allow that to happen. If there is disagreement among the President and the Board of Trustees, then we can go through the interview process. So that's kind of how it's worded.
I would like to propose an amendment to this, to this policy change. My concern is that, you know, my concern is twofold. One, is that I feel like part of our role as a board is to provide oversight, some oversight through the position process, through the process by which we place trustees onto the Board of Trustees at Cape Fear Community College. And I feel like this would give just a little bit too much authority and power to the Board of Trustees and the President, and sort of take away our role a little bit. I also am concerned about a future scenario wherein which the Board and the President, the Board of Trustees and the President come forward and say, we'd like this person to continue, and then we, as a board, would like to go in a different way. We're in the position then of making a negative decision rather than a positive one. I also understand that, you know, if a board member, speaking as a member of a different board, it takes a while to get up to speed. The situation we've just had, where we just appointed an individual, I don't really think needs to be revisited with this individual or any other individual. And so my amendment, and if I could just read the language, "When the term of a replacement trustee is about to expire, and he or she has served less than 18 months of a full term, the Board may reappoint such trustee to a successive term upon the written request of the President of CFCC and the CFCC Board of Trustees. The Board may make such reappointment without advertising the vacancy," et cetera, et cetera, following the original change." And I just feel that...
That's what we're doing.
Well, that's what I'm, that's what I'm proposing. This would make it for replacement appointees only, people who were not appointed to the term originally, but fulfilled somebody else's term.
I think that when you read the language that's in here, I know you're worried about not making a negative, but even in your scenario, you're still making it a negative. If the, if after 18 months, we're not satisfied, but the, you know, the President and the trustees want them, we decide not to. Ultimately, it's the Board's decision. I don't see where, anywhere in this language, it changes that the Board, if, in their decision, if they decide to, well, can do the advertising process. They can do it whenever they want.
Yeah, I agree. It makes it less of our decision.
No, it doesn't. It makes it 100% our decision, because if, if the President of Cape Fear Community College and the trustees came to us and said, we'd like for it to keep this current one, at that point, it's up to seven people to decide, well, they, it looks like they're doing some good things, they have a great relationship, do we want to keep that board member? If we don't want to keep that board member, we have a policy in place in terms of the advertising policy at that point, that we can do that. The only thing I would, and I think it's actually in there, the only thing I would add, or I would suggest to add, if we were to adopt this current policy, is maybe a time period, Mr. Bullard, maybe put something in there, that maybe 90 days prior to the expiration of a current board member, that would be when maybe the President and the Board of Trustees would need to let us know that they were okay with it. But it doesn't. I mean, the Board still has the ability to do whatever they want. They can reappoint, or they can...
It's certainly true. I just feel like there's an understood pressure.
It says the Board may make...
Says may make.
May make that statement, which gives us the power not to.
Yep, I agree.
I think it's written well.
I think the purpose, when I first got on this board, we had no dialogue with Cape Fear Community College regarding the trustees. We had got dialogue with the trustee himself or herself, and that was really it. So the purpose behind this was to open up that dialogue, which I think is really important, because I think we need to know is, you know, who we are appointing. Are they doing the job that we need them to do, or that Cape Fear needs them to do? So that was the point of this, is to kind of get that dialogue going. So I don't want to close that up again.
What about limiting it to at least one reappointment? Where after eight years, we take a look at it?
Again, it's, again, it's the Board that decides that. I don't know, I mean, if we don't want people to be on the, be appointed, if this Board doesn't want to be, have people on there more than eight years, then don't, don't reappoint them. Go through the application process.
Is there currently a limitation on terms?
There's not.
There are no, there are no term limits.
I am, I'm all for term limits.
That's state, that's per state statute.
And you're saying we're the only group that actually interviews candidates in the state?
They just appoint.
I actually think it's a great, I did interview candidates.
I do too, and that's why I was saying, I'd like to be able to present something to our State Board to say, you know, maybe you should show this to other boards, other appointing bodies, because it becomes, again, it encourages that dialogue. I mean, there are other ways, I think, that other boards are handling. I'm not saying that there's, there's no dialogue between the colleges and the, and the Boards of Education, or the County Commissioners, or the appointing bodies, but there's, there's definitely friction, and it's not easy when you've got three different appointing bodies. So I'm just trying to make sure that we have that dialogue, and we've got a great one now. I mean, we're, we're very fortunate, so...
And I can imagine that the President of the Cape Fear Community College or his trustees would write us any kind of recommendation that they did not sincerely believe in, and I think if we had heard or we felt that even with their recommendation, that, that our nominee or our cointy is not serving the school system, then we could make that decision. And if we don't hear from them, we know we need to go through the process of finding a new appointee.
Mr. Bullard, if we were to do that, could you add a, maybe a... It looks like we have to publish 90 days before, if we were to advertise, we probably would need to hear from the President of the Community College and the trustees a period before then.
Yes. You would, because if they don't make the recommendation, you would need time to do that, that 90-day advertising.
So if we can just add that, maybe add something in there.
If we waive this, is this going to, I guess it would interfere if we waited until June the 4th and went ahead with the normal procedure? Would this make it impossible to do what, I guess it's intended to do with the current new member of the trustees, as far as just having him reappointed, if that was the goal behind this? Would we have to go ahead and advertise if we wait until June the 4th to go ahead and take the vote on this?
Well, if you, if you don't make any changes, you're already within those 90 days now, so you would want to go ahead and advertise immediately if you're not going to change the policy.
So we should have gone ahead and advertised. I mean, technically, I guess.
Because the term, the term expires June 30th.
So we should have, we're supposed to do it within 90 days, or we should have done it 90 days before?
We should have already done it by now if we were going to go under the old policy.
So we should have already done this?
Right, right. I think there was an anticipation that the change was going to be made to the policy.
Oh, who...
Well, I know Judy and me, I know you're saying that, but I know that you received an email about a week or two ago that asked to contact, if you had any issues with it, to contact Ms. Nichols, and so I know the whole Board said that, so I assume you've already talked to Ms. Nichols about it?
I'm, I'm asking information right now.
Okay, okay, I just want to make sure you have the same information we do.
But that's why we're asking to waive first reading tonight, so that we can put a policy in place to make it fair for everyone.
So we should have had this advertised by April 1st?
Not even really need to advertise it. Mr. Morton and the trustees want Bruce Schell to stay down there.
Obviously.
And I do too, and I think most of the Board does.
I would say let's vote on it.
All right.
Just a point, you actually had a motion made for an amendment.
So we have to vet it now.
That we've got to act on, that's still sitting out there.
It would need a second.
Can we clarify the amendment then, because...
I think the amendment only talks about reappointing someone who's been there 18 months or less.
Correct.
Okay, so...
Traditionally, you've got, a motion was made to amend, waiting for a second, or if there's no second, then it fails for lack of a second.
Okay, so is there a second to the amendment?
For term limits?
For eight, for, for replacement.
Term limits are set by the State, correct? State?
Correct. Yeah, we, I don't, I don't know that we can, can we impose term limits if the state statute does not?
I don't think so. Well, the reason is that this Board would, would be attempting to bind future boards, and I don't think that that would be allowed. It would be up to a future Board whether to reappoint someone to successive terms or not.
Okay, so that's how you impose term limits, is by going in a different direction? Okay. So is there a second to Mr. Wortman's amendment of the 90 days?
Mr. Bullard's amendment.
Mr. Bullard's amendment, okay, sorry. Is there a second to Mr. Bullard's amendment of the 18 months? So, without hearing a second?
We default to the...
We default to this?
I would make a motion to waive first reading for this policy.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Opposed.
Okay, so the vote is...
I believe it was five-two.
Five-two.
Could I just clarify for the record that that vote in no way has anything to do with the exceptional work that trustee Wortman, oh, see, right back at you. That trustee Schell is doing. I'm merely concerned about the President.
So noted. Okay. Pardon, now we have to actually vote for the policy, yes. All right, so...
Make a motion to approve policy, can someone go to the, oh, see, I can see the policy number. Policy 1235.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
So five, it passes five-two?
The next policy, 1310, Board of Education Meetings. Mr. Bullard, if you will explain the changes there, the recommended changes.
Yes, Ms. Nichols. The change is to state that in situations where the Board is conducting a hearing, that the hearing will typically be held either on the second Tuesday or fourth Thursday of the month, as needed. In the past, there has been difficulty in getting hearings on the schedules of everybody involved, and so the thinking of the Policy Committee was that if you go ahead and designate those days as the potential days for the Board to hold hearings, people can keep their calendars as clear as possible those days, but also, the, the language would allow the Board flexibility to hear, to have hearings on other days if necessary, but it encourages them to take place either on the second Tuesday or fourth Thursday of each month. Also, it, it states that all Board members are encouraged to be in attendance for employee hearings, but doesn't require that. The Policy Committee talked about requiring it, but then declined to do that because there could be a situation in which one or two Board members had scheduling conflicts, and that could result in undue delay in having an employee hearing. So Board members are, all Board members are encouraged to attend employee hearings, but not required. And the same with student reassignment hearings, and the student reassignment appeal hearings are to be held in June every year, and those are the hearings where parents and students have appealed to the Board to be asked to be reassigned to a different school than the one that they've been assigned to.
And that's just for first reading? So if you have any suggestions or changes or questions, please contact me or Mr. Bullard or Mr. Robenbar, who's on the committee. The next policy is, policy 1320, Board of Education Agenda Format, and again, I guess, Mr. Bullard, you can share from the Policy Committee meeting.
The changes to this one were, were just minor. It is to delete the roll call portion of the meeting. Roll call is not required by Robert's Rules of Order, which is the rules that this Board has adopted. Ms. Adams does record who is President and who is not, and that will be reflected in the minutes. So actually calling the roll is not something that's required, so that is proposed to be deleted. And also, the other change is to the Call to the Audience section. As the Board will recall, we had more than 10 people sign up last month, not this month, and the Board is allowing three minutes per person with, for a total of 30 minutes, so if you have more than 10 people sign up, you're going over your 30 minutes, and even though the Board did accommodate that at the last meeting, the suggestion here of the Policy Committee is to break out the Call to the Audience into two separate sessions, so that they, if there are more than 10 people, you can give everyone time, but it won't take up so much time that the people who are here for the other agenda items have to wait through the entire Call to the Audience process. So the first Call to the Audience, which would occur relatively early in the meeting, as proposed, would be for matters that are on the agenda. And if the speakers want to speak to something that's not on the agenda, they would sign up for the second Call to the Audience, which is towards the end of the meeting. So that is, those are the, I believe those are all the proposed changes.
Would they have to sign up in a separate place, or would we go ahead and separate them out based on the agenda?
We would probably, we would put two sign-up sheets online. That's what we, that's what we did in the past when we, this isn't a new format for us.
If somebody signed up in the incorrect place, though, they could still speak, I mean, we could make that work.
You, as a Board, have a lot of discretion in that. For example, if there's only three people signed up total, and you want to give everyone that first part, you could obviously move them all up to the front part.
On the other hand, though, this is, I'm concerned about, I like the participation, I think it's important, but when you have parents with kids that go to school the next day, and the second part could end up going until, you know, eight or nine, that would make it very difficult for them to come and speak. And we, I want, I know you do too, you all want community participation, especially of families with kids in the schools.
This would, in effect, though, double the amount of available time for, for public comment, because it'd be 30 at one end and 30 at the other end.
Well, why are we limiting it?
We're not, we're doubling it.
No, I mean, 30, we could do the hour at the beginning. I'm not sure why we're limiting it. That would change it.
I think we also have to be aware of the other people that are speaking here. I mean, just looking around the room today, we have President Morton, we have our district attorney, we have a local... I mean, just looking around the room today, we have President Morton, we have our district attorney, we have a local, you know, our chief judge. And we have to be cognizant, I think, of, of everyone in the room. I understand giving, allowing people to speak at the beginning of the agenda, but then getting through that, everyone else who's also set their schedules aside. And then, um, if you're speaking on non-agenda items, allow you to speak at the end. So it does double the time that we're talking about, and it also, um, accommodates everyone else that's on the agenda that's here to speak as well.
Well, I'm not sure why we're limiting it to thirty minutes. If, if we're going to split it up, I mean, then we'd be limiting it to sixty minutes just at two different times. I'm not quite sure the rationale behind that, but I'm, as I said, I think that the parents who have to get kids to school, have to help them with their homework, they, they need, it's easier, it's a heck of a lot easier if we have everybody at the beginning. That's my take on it.
Okay?
Well, this is for first reading, so give it some thought and let us hear from you. The next policy is policy sixteen sixty, New Hanover County Board of Education Students Scholarships. And again, I'll ask Mr. Bullard if he'll explain the changes.
The changes to this one were to clarify and make sure that students who were interested in receiving the scholarship and agreeing to, uh, be one of our teachers, uh, could do so if they are going to start their education at a community college, uh, as opposed to a four-year college. Previously, it required them to go straight into a four-year college. So the change is to allow them to start out in community college. Obviously, they would have to complete a four-year degree to get a, a teaching license. Uh, and then the other changes were to give the board flexibility in the event that the commissioners funded more than four scholarships. Uh, you can accumulate those funds and actually create a fifth scholarship once you have enough funds, uh, to do so. And, uh, it also allows you some flexibility with regard to, uh, the amount that the board is paying for the tuition and, and expenses for the, for the recipient each year, because there have been, uh, situations where the students have not needed the entire amount. And so that will, uh, leave you with some, some surplus funds that you can then, of course, use to accumulate until you have enough for another scholarship. So, uh, it, it says up to seven thousand per year, uh, and up to, um, excuse me, per year, uh, per student, up to twenty-eight thousand, uh, per year for four students. Uh, but it doesn't have to be that amount. So it, it gives you the flexibility to, uh, pay only the expenses that are incurred and, uh, and to put the surplus money to another scholarship, uh, once you've accumulated enough. And I believe there were a couple of changes that the committee talked about that, uh, are not reflected on here. They're very small. On the bottom of the first page, uh, the last bullet where it references SAT scores, since some students take the ACT, uh, the, I believe that the suggested change was to, uh, to, instead of saying SAT, to say standardized test scores. And then the, the next phrase is writing sample, since you don't require samples, since you don't require more than one, uh, the suggested change was to change that to singular and say writing sample. And I believe those were all the changes unless someone else, Ms. Adams is indicating she thinks those were all the ones that were discussed. So thank you.
It does still say SAT scores on page two.
Yes, so they just didn't make that change, but we talked about that as a retreat and.
Right, okay.
So we've got it in place now, we talked about it at the policy committee.
Right.
Meeting. Just Mr. Bullard's been a little busy and we're all working as a team here.
One thing that I could, I, I, I'm sorry I haven't brought this up prior. Sometimes when students go and they have developmental classes that they have to take, specifically, I know that happened a lot at the community college when I used to work there. So it's not always going to finish in four years. Is it possible to maybe extend that to five years? Especially if they did start at a community college, there would, there should be additional funding available for that fifth year to still keep them within that twenty-eight thousand? Is that just, just something for consideration? Not everyone finishes in four years, I didn't.
They're going to be saving their money anyway when they're in the community.
The board does have the flexibility to grant that extension. Um, if you'll read in the second bullet there about in the middle, it says unless an extension is granted by the board.
Oh, thank you.
And we did that this year because we have one staying on to get the master's degree. So those are the four policies, um, one that we've just approved. Now you have three to think about. They'll be presented for a second reading next month. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Nichols. Moving on to item number B, Quarterly Budget Summary Appendix F, Mary Hazel Small.
Thank you, um, just wanted to, President Morton, that on March thirty-first, two thousand nineteen, um, we had expended or accomplished seventy-seven percent of our budgets over the line.
Just for information, all right?
Yep, that's, the state added the requirement that we give you this quarterly update, uh, a year ago.
Okay, all right. Any questions? All right, moving on, thank, thank you, Ms. Small. Moving on to item number C, Career Coaches Appendix G, there's my name. Um, I will turn it over to our fine folks from the community college and President Morton. Thank you very much for being here.
Thank you for the invitation, really appreciate it. Didn't know we would be on the agenda so much tonight, but that is a focus for you, and I do hope our communications has improved from previously. Um, again, thank you for your invitation to talk about career coaching initiative that we've taken on. Um, also, I'd like to thank you for the, your most recent appointment as well, Bruce Shell. He, with his previous history in county, uh, history in county government, he hit the ground running. And so, uh, it's been, it's been a great fit for us. Um, also, if you have not received the invitation, I do want to invite you to the commencement that we have Friday. Uh, it's, uh, we have three services, ten o'clock, one o'clock, and four o'clock. And so we're going to have, um, eight hundred students or more walk on Friday graduating. So if you have additional questions, let me know, we'll get you additional, additional information about it. But tonight, here, and again, appreciate the invitation, so we keep that communication channel going. Um, it's having to do with, uh, recently, we received two grants and proud of those. Uh, both of them were to help us with, uh, transitioning high school students into the college career and also retention of Cape Fear students as well. So one grant was from the North County Community College System Office. It was for two hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars, and what it is, is to help fund three career coaches. So it's a fifty percent funding, we provide the other fifty percent for three career coaches that would get a place in the high schools. And by the way, thank you, Board of Education, for the support of letting those employees sit in the high school. Thank you, Dr. Markley, for making that happen. And, uh, we have two of them in the New Hanover County schools, we have one in Pender County. And we're hoping the program continues to grow with the state, right? Since you're on the board there, uh, for additional funding. As legislators are looking at another twenty, thirty thousand dollars to help fund those, because already we're seeing a benefit from that program. Um, the other is having to do with a Title III grant, which is U.S. Department of Education Grant for one point nine million. It's really our largest grant ever we received, and it's to help fund two advisor positions and two success coaches, uh, to help us with student retention, academic achievement, and completion. But in addition to that, it also helped us acquire some software that Chair Eastep had asked us to talk about, Avizio, which is going to help us with retention. But it's most, it's always best to hear it from, directly from the person who's actively engaged. So also invited one of our new career coaches to come and talk about the program, so you have a better understanding of what's happening within your school. Uh, Kristen Tackett is one of our new career coaches. She is here tonight to give us a little more insight about what she does on, on a daily basis. Kristen has been a career technical education in field for ten years and has a career development coordinator, uh, where she worked in the New Hanover County School System. So thank you for training her so she could come to Cape Fear and do a great job for us. But she currently is, uh, working in Laney and New Hanover. And following her, I'm going to have also Joanne Sears, she's our Vice President of Student Services, talk to you about the new Avizio software that we're just beginning to implement. So first, I could have Kristen come up, she's going to do a short presentation, like five to seven minutes, to kind of give you an idea of what's happening with the career coaches. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, President Morton. Just to get started, and again, I'm Kristen Tackett, and, um, thank you very much for allowing us to come into the schools. We've had great success so far with the students, and we've really enjoyed working with them and watching the light bulb come on, especially with the seniors that are, you know, finishing up with their education here in New Hanover County School System. So our job as a career coach is just to work with the students, really, to make sure that they're outlining their personal, educational, occupational goals and also teaching them those self advocacy skills, um, for proactive communication as they transition to the college world. As many of you guys know, when they start having to speak and, you know, advocate for themselves, that's when they're starting to struggle with that. So the individual services, um, and what sets us apart from the career development coordinators at the high school is that we work more one-on-one with the students versus the career development coordinators are working with groups of students. So we're trying to do more of that one-on-one interaction. So, um, in front of you is some information for you guys. We have gone into classrooms, we've worked one-on-one with these students. Um, and my colleague and I have done over six hundred and twenty-three career pathway, um, plans, um, to organize and outline the next steps for education for these students. Okay, these career development plans, they integrate, um, what classes would be best suited for them in high school and for college. We are working closely with the career and college promise students to help them, um, look at bachelor degree plans and to research what they ultimately want to go to school for, so they can begin with the end in mind and work backwards to ensure that those classes that they are duly enrolling in are counting both towards high school credits but also towards their bachelor degree when they leave us, okay? Um, scholarship, scholarship information, we're working with them on internships, volunteering experiences, job placement, and job shadowing. Um, our ultimate goal is to hopefully flip this paradigm shift. Back in the day, when I was growing up, we chose the college that we wanted to go to. Then once you were in college, you really chose what major you wanted, and then you tried to find a career from that. We're trying to flip that decision-making paradigm to start off with the career first, then choosing the major, then choosing the college that's appropriate to maintain or to, to meet those outcomes. We have been partnered with the state class, specifically at Myrtle Grove, um, Middle School this year, and we worked with the students to survey their interest inventories, um, and partner them and show them the resources that will be available for them at Cape Fear while they're enrolled in mid-high school, so that they can start meeting those, start, sorry, achieving those goals and working towards the grade point average that they're going to need to have to be able to participate in this program once they move to high school. This is just a shot of that specific state group, um, touring the automotive department. So just opening their eyes to see that there are so many more careers out there, um, and there are pathways available for them to enroll in. These students can choose two pathways while they're in high school through dual enrollment, so they can take college transfer classes, but they can also take career and technical education pathways, so that they can explore, um, these options while they're still in high school. So we have the following, uh, college transfer pathways that are being offered. There's five different pathways, um, one of which, the nursing pathway, allows the students to go ahead and get those, um, prerequisites towards entering the nursing program and start working on their point count sheet, so that they can go straight into that nursing program. And we have over fifty-three career and technical education pathways to choose from, and we keep adding more and more. Our latest one, I'm proud to announce, is the early childhood education pathway. So that's partnering up with our early childhood education programs that we have in the high schools, so that we're trying to provide that smooth, seamless transition for them to go from high school to potentially community college and then to a four-year institution as well. Um, this is just a screenshot of one of the parent nights that we had for parent interest. We had over eight hundred and forty parent attendees and student attendees at our spring interest meetings. I don't know if you visited Laney's Media Center anytime soon, but it was standing room only, Laney Media Center, so that was quite an accomplishment. This is just something that is growing exponentially and we're just so elated that the students are taking advantage of these opportunities. So just to give you some projections, um, we had over twelve hundred and fifty-four New Hanover County Schools students eligible to register for classes. Um, right now, currently, they're able to register for classes. Um, New Hanover County Schools, their career and college promise students enrolled in one thousand one hundred and ninety-four classes in the fall of two thousand and eighteen. And just this afternoon, I tried to do some, some more recent calculations, and we have over one thousand three hundred and eighty-nine students signed up for class, or, sorry, we have students signed up to participate in over one thousand three hundred and eighty-nine classes this fall. So we've already exceeded, and that number was up a hundred classes from last week when we pulled these enrollment reports. So we're working hard diligently with these students to make sure that they're making the most out of these last two years of high school and getting these college credits out the way. So, um, we aim to promote the two plus two programs that Cape Fear has to offer. Also, turning and training the students about the associate degree programs, the certificates and diplomas offered in the career and technical education trades and skilled trades, and also teaching the students about the continuing education programs that we have. A lot of times, those are overlooked, and those are excellent pathways, and we're trying to open those pathways more for the students of New Hanover County Schools to be able to participate in, which would allow them to earn a degree in credential before they graduate, um, and go into the workforce if they so choose. I don't know what happened. Oh, gosh. So, um, along with just career and college promise program, we talk a lot about traditional four-year college and university information. We help students with their FAFSA, we help them with their residency determination, um, all those steps that students find overwhelming and they just need to take that first baby step. We're in there helping those students to make sure that they're, you know, starting off on the right foot towards college. We are planning on going into the high schools within the last month of school to help the seniors who are graduating, make sure they're enrolling in classes, um, and to, you know, reduce the, the gap in between graduation and when they actually go off to college. So the student, um, opportunities that are available, we talk to them also a lot about the different, um, student services that are offered, the disability services that they can claim as a student of the school, no matter what school they go to. So teaching them that, about the learning lab, um, counselors, academic advising, the career development center that their college should have on campus, um, the registrar, and about financial, financial aid. So, um, career readiness, we often definitely focus on career readiness, the employment documents that they need to have, interviewing tips and tricks, soft skills awareness and job shadowing. And we work with them to help them fill out their employment documents and to get any documentation that they may need for employment. And, um, I don't really know where this power plant went wrong, I apologize. So, um, but in the classroom, we've worked with over fifty-six classrooms, um, reaching more than eight hundred and forty-three students this past year. We've helped in the senior English classes to help them write their resumes for the graduation projects. So we're, we're doing as much as possible to get in there and, and reach these students on, you know, very, various platforms that we can. So, um, and, you know, I always say three E's for career development are employment, enlistment, and enrollment. So we've also, you know, helped bring in some people from the military and kind of talk about the different options that are available for them in the military as well. So, um, thank you for having us, the Career Development Coaches. Um, my name again is Kristen Tackett. I work at Laney High School and at New Hanover High School, and my colleague Annette Johnson is down at Ashley High School and Hogarth High School. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Anybody have any questions?
I just, I teach a lot of these students, and they can answer any question except when you say, what would you like to do?
Yes.
And so I really appreciate, uh, this program, and thank you, President Morton, for coming.
Thank you.
Could I, could I ask, um, you said that, I believe it's Myrtle Grove is the middle school that you visit and, uh, give them options about what their future could be in high school? Is that the only middle school? I mean, working with the different, uh, programs that is offered to them.
So this year, we piloted that, that group visit with, um, Myrtle Grove Middle School, but next year, we're hoping to open it up to the other middle school.
Oh, great, because it sounds like to prepare them for the high school experience and having these options, that's great.
Yes, and we definitely would like to provide more opportunities to have the middle school parents come out and see what the high school. school parents come out and see what the high school has to offer through dual enrollment opportunities for these students.
Absolutely, thank you.
I have a logistical question. You said that we host you in the schools. I'm just curious, do you have an office? Do you work out of the library? What do you, where is your space?
I was afforded an office at Laney, I'm very thankful for that because space is precious there. And then at New Hanover High School, I work out of the Career and College Center with Mrs. Salkenlaski, so she graciously helps me. And Ms. Annette Johnson has an office at both Ashley High School and Hogarth High School.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Joanne Series, I'm the Vice President of Student Services at Cape Fear Community College. And just real briefly, I wanted to update you also on another initiative that we're very much involved with. President Morton mentioned that we were very fortunate this past year to actually receive two grants, and one of them brought us, Ms. Kristin Tackett, who we're just thrilled to have, you can just see how involved she is and how dedicated to her students. But the other grant that we've also received is a federal grant from the Department of Education, and that is around student retention and success, and that's really what those funds are geared for. Part of that grant allowed us to purchase a new piece of software called Avizo. And what that piece of software does, it's actually a case management software that allows us to take a team approach when it comes to supporting students. So that advisors and counselors and our career coaches that are in the high schools can all work together to make sure that they support students and provide interventions if a student is beginning to have problems. We are really looking forward to seeing what improvements that this software is going to make. We are looking to be more proactive rather than reactive. In the past, if a student was struggling and they had to reach out to our offices, we would then try to get them back on track and get them help. But with this piece of software and this team approach now, we're going to have our faculty actually sending in if there is an alert that a student maybe is, has several absences or their grades are slipping. This team will then be called into action to be able to reach out to that student, get them back on track before they slip down too far. So we are in the process of implementing this right now. We're looking to launch by July first. This will definitely be impacting the New Hanover County students because this will be another tool that our career coaches and our folks back at our main campuses will be able to use in support of those students. So we're just very fortunate and very grateful that we were able to get the funds to secure this piece of it well. So I do thank you again for this opportunity, and we're just thrilled with the partnership that we have with New Hanover County at this point. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think probably sometimes President Morton and Melissa Singler dread when I have my state meetings because I'm, he gets these texts like, "Do you have this thing? Do you have this software? Do you have this? Do you have that? Career coaches are coming down, I think the grants are coming." So I do get very excited at the state meetings because I think that, you know, serving on that board is so rewarding because the conversation around community colleges is a very positive one, I think, on the state level. I think our legislators do support the community college system. We've been kind of the quiet force for many years, but I think that voice is growing louder. But there are some really cool initiatives, and the career coaches was one of them, but it's thanks to Cape Fear for supporting the other half of that initiative. And then the Avizo, is it Avizo? Avizo software, I think, has the potential to help us because, you know, we have schools in common, we have WECs, and then we have the CCP students. So you can, I think, tag some of those, some of our instructors as, I think, users in that system. So I think these initiatives help, and I just wanted to make sure that we all knew about it. So thank you very much for making those investments and educating us. So, all right. Any questions for anyone? All right, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I would ask, I know Chief Evangelist and Judge Corpenning and Mr. David would love to hang out for a little while, but I'd ask if we could maybe move them up a little bit in the order and allow them to present.
Okay. All right, so I think they...
Pardon?
Okay, so with board approval, I would like to ask to move item A under New Business to next on our agenda.
Salute.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, so I would like to then go to inter-agency governance agreement on the handling of school offenses, Appendix, and Dr. Markley.
I'm going to ask Judge Corpenning to come up and introduce the folks that are with him. This is, Judge Corpenning's been to several of our last board meetings, sharing numbers and statistics from this agreement that's been in place for three years now. It was the model agreement for the state, and it's up for renewal. But I'll turn it over to you, Judge, and let you...
Sure, thanks, Tim. So I've got with me Chief Evangelist of City Police, Deputy Chief Donnie Williams, who is a homegrown Wilmingtonan, Second-in-command of the Wilmington Police Department, and elected DA Ben David. Sheriff Mayan sends his regrets he could not join us tonight. The reason I asked them to come is because our group, our working group, fully supports renewal of the agreement. The folks who might have the biggest complaint about it would be our law enforcement and prosecutors, and they're fully supported. I shared the data with you, you know, the one data point that kind of takes your breath away is that before we started doing this work, eighty-eight percent of kids who were referred to SROs got charged. Last year was about twenty-three percent. The purpose of the agreement is to keep kids in school, out of court, and off the streets. We've had lots of success. We've had enough success here, the state did recognize our work. Our project, our agreement is part of the crazy age in North Carolina. Next week, I'll be in three western counties, working with them, start theirs, I'll be in Greenville the week after that, Nebron the week after that, traveling all over the state doing this work. It works, and we're here to ask you to renew it and authorize the chair and the superintendent to sign on your behalf. And I'd invite any of our partners who are here to say anything they'd like, but I'm grateful that they're here and for their support.
Just quickly, this is a success story, you know, they're all our kids, and we want to keep them all in school, we want to keep them out of jail, keep them out of prison. So if we can divert them, get them help, it's a win for all. So I, please, sign the agreement, thanks.
It's a tough act to follow. Good evening, Madam Chair and Honorable School Board members. Thank you so much for giving us this chance to present these results and urge you to sign on for this continued partnership. We're achieving together something neither of us can do by ourselves. We all want the same thing. We want our kids to be safe, first and foremost. We want them to stay in school. We want them to learn from teachable moments, and a lot of those things can be achieved through discipline at school rather than misdemeanors and felonies at the courthouse. When two out of three people in jail and prison in America are high school dropouts, keeping them in school is a really big deal. As a father of three school-aged children myself, I can tell you that I think about their safety every day, just as I know every parent in this room does. And I am deeply committed to this partnership because I know it's reducing crime, it's reducing recidivism, it's making everybody in our New Hanover County Schools safer. I give real credit, first and foremost, to Judge Corpenning within the judicial system, but to the amazing teachers we have and to the principals and administrators who are taking on the hard work of not only educating our children but making sure that the discipline is being handled out fairly and efficiently when it occurs. And I know that that's going to continue to be the cornerstone of this partnership. We will always be there to back you up when necessary. The vast majority of what we see among children and young adults should remain at the schoolhouse, and that's what this partnership recognizes. DAs around this state have called me and said, "What's the secret sauce? Can we do this too?" And that's why this judge is so busy. If imitation is the sincerest form of flattery, then you should be very flattered by what you started in partnership with this justice official because it is working, and I urge you to continue doing it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Bullet has reviewed the agreement. He was part of the original writing of the agreement. He had a couple of minor changes as we move forward on this agreement. It will go to the county commissioners at the end of the month for their approval, and then we'll do a signing ceremony at one of our schools after we, after the county folks and the city approve it. So stand ready for any questions.
Judge, I would say, Judge, and I've talked to both of you all, it's amazing what y'all do. I know you're traveling all the time doing this stuff, and Ben, the passion that you have for our kids, because, and that's really what it's all about. So I really appreciate everything that y'all have done to bring this thing together, too.
Just one point for those who are watching, I mean, one of the principal effects of this is our school resource officers are in school, at school, more than they've ever been before, which is, when we're talking about school safety, is a game changer. It also has a dramatic effect on school climate, we've seen that.
I want to say, Donnie Williams didn't want to speak, but he's spoken a lot of times to the children, and we appreciate all the service and the love and dedication he has for those children that he's talked with.
I was just going to say the same thing. Jay invited me to a fundraiser breakfast one morning, and I didn't know anything about it, and he didn't tell me to bring a box of Kleenex, though they should have, because this gentleman got up and spoke, and if you ever want to hear a success story, that's it.
Don, you're a Laney graduate, right?
Yes, sir.
So you were one of Rick's students or Dr. Hollis?
I actually went to middle school.
Yeah, a lot of folks tell us that this used to be an auditorium before it was a media center.
Your Honor, Attorney David, officers, I mean, from the bottom of my heart, thank you, just thank you a million times. I'm always inspired when I see you guys and inspired by what you do for our students.
All right, yes, so I would call for a motion on this inter-agency government agreement.
I'd make a motion to approve the agreement.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thankfully, it is approved.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you for all your hard work.
Thanks for the call, Paul.
All right, so we will go back to our regularly scheduled agenda, and we will go to item number D under Information Equity Update, Appendix H, Dr. LaShawn Smith.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for providing me the opportunity to provide to you and also the community an update on the district's work in relation to equity. We have scheduled our first groundwater training, and we're very excited about this because not only does this represent training for our school staff members, but it also represents training for the community. We are hosting this training at Cameron Arch Museum, who is a partner with us in this work, and we are training seventy-five individuals, fifty-five of those, we anticipate, will be members of our school staff and our central office staff, and about twenty, fifteen to twenty community members. So again, we're very excited about that collaboration and what that opportunity affords us. This is a three-hour introductory training to racial equity. It is a participatory presentation, and the trainers from the Race Equity Institute will be using stories and data to help the participants understand the structural roots of racism. So again, we're very excited about this opportunity. I know we also have at least one of our board members that's planning on attending as well. We've invited Reverend Camp, oh, excuse me, Pastor Campbell, I believe, he is going to be able to attend, and we have members from Step Up Wilmington, as well as some other folks that we've included as partners in this work. Following that, we will have members of our equity team that will be attending Phase One training at different locations throughout the state, primarily the Raleigh-Durham area. We did not want to wait to be able to bring this directly to our district. This is a two-day training, it is much, much more in-depth, and it really digs into providing an analysis that helps the participants gain clarity about how racism is organized, how it is often hidden from our view, and how to work to disrupt the powerful influence of racism in our community. And so again, we will have members of our equity team that will be attending this training, and I think in the months of June and July. And then that will allow us to launch into our racial equity discussion series. And the only prerequisite for that is that you have that Phase One equity training. And these will be community conversations, they're going to be monthly, face-to-face, they're going to be facilitated, we'll have different facilitators. And again, those folks who have gone through Phase One training, whether they're community members or they're school staff, those folks will be able to participate in that training. Additionally, this June, June twenty-sixth, we have scheduled implicit bias training for all of our principals. We are working with members of our equity team as well as the trainer to design something that we feel will be impactful. The focus here will be on helping principals to create an awareness of how implicit bias works, well, implicit bias works, and also how it impacts their work with children and families within their buildings. And our goal will be to empower our principals and for them to develop and implement practices that will allow for greater equity in their schools. So we're very excited about that. Additionally, at our all administrators retreat, which is scheduled for July thirty-first, we will launch our first book study with principals entitled "Despite Best Intentions", and this really is going to take a deep look at the achievement gap. So understanding how you can have good schools in a district but also have the disparities between the different groups of children that you're serving within that school. Following that, we will begin our second book study with principals, and this will also include assistant principals, and both book studies will be facilitated. We are working with, to identify who those facilitators will be. And this book study delves more into practice, so what's happening actually in schools. And so the expectation here will be that principals will participate in this book study, assistant principals will participate in this book study, and then principals will create within their school smaller groups of teachers to go through this study as well. Because we want to impact not only our understanding and our awareness, but our behavior. What is it that we do in the classroom? And we are beginning this, this particular work, the beginning of the 2019-2020 school year. Additional training and professional learning opportunities that we're scheduling, as I said, we're having our first groundwater training this month. We are planning on hosting at least two more during next school year, one in the fall, one in the spring. Again, an opportunity to bring together school staff as well as community members. We know that this is work that we can't do alone, so we want to make sure that we have strong partnerships with our community. Following that, we will be bringing also a fall Phase One training and a spring Phase One training. And again, those are the two-day trainings that really deal, dig deep into racism and how you develop the skills, knowledge, and understandings to make sure that you are disrupting the impact of racism in our community. We are also working on scheduling our teacher cultural competency and bias training. Recently, I had the opportunity with Ms. Quattlebaum to sit down with Joe Conway, who is an employee of New Hanover Regional Medical Center and leads this work for that organization, and we were able to collaborate on additional direction in this area, specifically around teacher cultural competency and bias training. And what we're looking to do with that is we're going to administer that in ways. We want to make sure that we touch every teacher, so, you know, every teacher, we're not going to hire at the beginning of the year, so we want to make sure that we have it in such a way that we're able to sustain this, and every teacher benefits from this. And then also, we're working on establishing monthly touch points for our principals that are aligned to school improvement. Finally, just a little bit of the work of the equity team, most recently, and we've somewhat transitioned our name since we're looking at creating a board committee specifically on equity, we're looking to transition maybe more to being considered a work group. But we were asked by Policy to bring back some recommendations regarding the purpose of the committee, the Equity Committee for the Board, and so we're planning on doing that. I think some of that information may have already been shared with the Board. Excuse me. We are also bringing a recommendation on the application for community members, so information that we believe would be important to include in that application. So information that we believe would be important to include in that application for any community member that wanted to be on that board committee. We are also looking at making recommendations in regards to changes to the board scholarship, so that we feel that it has greater representation of the groups of, so the greater representation in the recipients in, in parallel to the district and the students that we serve in this district. We are also making a recommendation to the board about reviewing existing policies and guidelines to ensure that it aligns with the board's beliefs. And then also, we are looking to launch a Google site. We've had a lot of partners to share resources with us. We've had a lot of our team members to attend trainings in different locations and bring back a lot of resources. And so I've got a really thick folder, but that's not very efficient when I want to share it out. So we are looking to create a Google site that would be accessible, and we can store our resources and make it available to, to folks. And then also, we worked on defining our purpose and our responsibilities because we want to make sure that we're in alignment with the, the board equity committee as well. In addition to what I've shared with you and not included in the PowerPoint, just the work with our, our community partners, Dr. Markley and I had a conversation scheduled with James Ford, and I don't know if you're familiar with him, but he was a 2014 teacher, North Carolina Teacher of the Year. But he sits on the State Board of Education, and unfortunately, their meeting extended, so we had to reschedule ours. But we are consulting with him around this work. And then also, we are continuing our work in terms of planning a curriculum equity audit as well. Glad to answer any questions you might have.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
First of all, the cost for this?
So there are different costs, specifically going back to the groundwater training. The groundwater training is a cost of about $4,000. We will be training seventy-five people, and then there are travel costs associated with that, which I don't anticipate them being very much, given that our trainers are coming to us from the Raleigh-Durham area. With the Phase One training, the training for participants associated with that is about $275 per person to attend the training, and then it is overnight, so we do have travel and lodging associated with that. We are looking to have eight to nine people trained, but we recognize, you know, the high cost associated with that. So that's why we're looking to bring that training to our district. The race equity discussion series, really, there are no costs associated with that. It just requires the commitment of the folks who are participating in that. With the implicit bias training, I want to say that cost is around $1,000 because it is a, it is a local trainer, and so there are not travel costs associated with that. And then it is, I want to say about a three-hour training.
Dr. Smith, she's worked with us over the last several years. This is not, if it's the trainer I'm thinking of?
So she has, she actually facilitated our first equity team training, which was, which was good because it gave us the opportunity to sit down with her, to provide her feedback specific to the outcomes that we've listed up here. Because we want our principals to really understand how bias impacts their work with children and with, with their families, and to walk away feeling empowered, and then also with the ability to develop and implement practices in their building to, to change that. So, so yeah, so we have, we've worked with her, and she is a longstanding member of this, this community as well. The book study, their minimum cost, we anticipate, we're not sure what the facilitator cost will be, but right now, their minimal cost is really the cost of the book. And of course, we can recycle those as we move through additional teachers. Same thing with, with this book study. When we do get to the Phase One training, those costs, it's about $11,000 to bring a Phase One training to the district, and that's a full two-day training. You start at eight, you finish at five on both days. But I will say that in speaking with, and I don't want to overstep my bounds, but in speaking with one of our partners, they have expressed a strong interest in helping support us financially with this because they want to make sure that their staff members can be a part of it as well.
I guess also, we're using the word equity team, and it seems like we've planned out about a year-long process for, of things that we're going to do. It looks like Phase One is in the fall, as well as spring training as well? Is, that, that's accurate?
Yes, so this will encompass a full year. We will definitely learn along the way and may make some tweaks and adjustments. But we are planning for the full 2019-2018 year with also having some additional conversations about establishing some equity targets. We haven't really talked too much about what we want our metrics to be.
What do you mean equity target?
So in terms of what do we want to see as the measurable outcomes from this work?
Right.
So it may be that we issue pre- and post-surveys to stakeholders in our community, and so we want to see improvement along the way. It may be that we see greater representation of underrepresented student groups in our advanced placement classes or in our AIG programs. It may be that we see decreases of students when it comes to, to students who are overrepresented in some way. So we've not had all of those conversations. We are beginning that work in terms of our pathway with our equity team, but all of that we would bring to the board because we want that to come out of the equity committee. So it's more than just the voice of the work group. It really represents the views of the board.
And I guess, one, I guess, concern I have is we're, you've talked about race the entire, the entire time as equity, and I don't think, equity really isn't only about race, I think we would all acknowledge. And you've laid out an entire year plan that deals with race, but we haven't heard one mention of special ed. We haven't heard one mention of the LBG community. And, and I'm wondering, was that even considered, or how is that factoring into equity? Or do you see equity only as race?
So what I would say is equity is when you have children that you serve in your district, and you are wanting them to be successful. Different children are going to need different things. So if you, you know, even look at the slide, you see the slide was intentionally, the background was intentionally chosen because here you have an image of a child that's, that's in a wheelchair. So our conversations definitely have centered around race, and I think probably that has come about because the issues that really brought this to, to a head were racially based. So again, it began with the issue at Cottington around the slavery game. But our conversations have definitely not been limited to that. We've had conversations specifically with one board member in terms of inclusion. And when you think about equity in this work, it really is about ensuring that children are included because if you are inclusive in what you do, then you are achieving equity. So our definition of equity really focuses on looking at every individual in our district and making sure they have what they need to be successful.
Do, are there specific, I mean, because everything you laid out dealt with race. So are there specific programs that we maybe should be looking at for some of these other issues with equity? I mean, just because some, there was a, an issue that arose at Cottington doesn't mean that there is not other issues that I think we should also be taking, taking a look at. And, and it's great that we've laid out an entire year of training for, for racial equity, but again, pushing other equities to the background, when there may be training available for some of those, it seems like if we're going to do this, we should try to incorporate all of those together. I mean, I, I think because the representatives on the equity team probably should represent all those groups. I'm sure they do.
So what I would say to you in, in, if, if I, if I understand what you, what you're saying, when we are looking at, again, inclusion, we're, we're talking about all children. When we're looking at bias, if you think about bias, bias doesn't necessarily just impact black or white or white and Hispanic. People have biases regarding how people dress, how they talk, how they appear. So when we're addressing implicit bias, we're addressing implicit bias for all. So the implicit bias training for principals will be about how your predispositions, how your unintentional actions impact the children that you come across. I think often it does go to race because that comes very clearly in the forefront. I think it often goes to students with disabilities because that comes very clearly in the forefront. But I think you can discriminate against people for a variety of reasons. So what I would say is, if we address the issue of race, if we address the issue of inclusion, if we address the issue of equity in our district, all of our children are going to benefit.
And that's, and that's good, because that's the first, I just want to make sure, because that was the first time you mentioned kids with disabilities. So I want to make sure that all those kids are also incorporated in the equity team.
Yeah, I don't think that we would train on understanding implicit bias and then choose to discriminate against a different group because we're no longer discriminating against this group.
I just want to, I'm not actually discriminating. I'm just, I'm just making sure that we're addressing all, all of our equities.
Yes, yes. When we are addressing implicit bias, we are talking about all children. Yes.
So who is actually going to receive the implicit bias training? I know we're starting with the principals, but as part of the Phase One training, when, when are we getting this to the teachers?
So our plan is that all teachers would receive this, now we understand, well, and, and not just all teachers, but folks who come directly in contact with, with children. So we would include our counselors and associate workers. But we understand if we've got nineteen hundred employees, we want to do it well, then we need to do this in a phase. And so that'll be the work of the equity work group in conjunction with, with the equity board committee once they come to, come to being in terms of what that actually looks like. So we have some idea because we, you know, it's kind of like you don't know what you know, but you know what you don't know. We know we can't do it in one setting. You know, we don't have a set, a setting really where we could touch nineteen hundred teachers. And even if we tried to do it at a thousand teachers at a time, and the many of us, it would be ineffective. So we want to make sure that what occurs is effective. So we are still in the process of designing that, but the plan is to launch for the 2019-2020 school year.
Yeah, I think that, and I'm, I know I'm, I'm speaking kind of ahead of time, but I think there's going, there are going to be some recommendations coming out of the Title IX Committee, too, in terms of training. So I think we all probably need to work together, trying to figure out when all, all of these trainings should occur and how they're going to occur, and how we're going to get these out to the teachers. Because there are, there's, as we all know, there's so many trainings that they, they have to, and they should go through. But we, you know, I want to make sure that we're being very thoughtful and how, and deliberate in how we, we, we impact the teachers so they can absorb it.
And that is part of why we're reaching out to partners in the community with New Hanover Regional Medical Center. Because if you think about it, I think they've got over seven thousand employees, and they're doing some of this work. So how are they doing it? How are they doing it effectively? Also, in speaking with Mr. Ford, he is doing some of this work across the state. There'll be other consultants that I'm sure that we will reach out to. So we want to do this in a very intentional way, but also a way that's very effective. And what we don't want to do is, you know, we're not trying to beat up on our teachers. We are trying to support our teachers. You know, I've heard from folks who say that they want to have better understanding and that they really support this training, and so they're excited about it being delivered and being made available. So we want to do it in such a way that it empowers them and it doesn't send a negative message to them.
I was, I was invited to participate in the last meeting, and I will say that my takeaway was that the group that has, has been brought together around this, it was twenty people that represented all different parts of our district. And it was collaborative. It was respectful, and there was a focus on accountability and sustainability. And I think that that is so important when we're talking about equity. And I'm just grateful that for the team and the work that they are doing, I think you're going to have a true impact for all of our students.
Thank you.
Dr. Smith?
Yes.
I, I, I share some of the concerns about timeline because there is a tendency, I think, in, in anything, to, to lose momentum. June twenty-sixth is a fantastic date for our administrators. Do you think it's reasonable to lay out a goal of having every single teacher in New Hanover County receive this training by the end of the next academic year? Is that, is that what you're striving for?
Yes, I do, and I think it is a reasonable goal.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you for all your hard work on this.
Well, I, I appreciate that. And just as a last note, we are also releasing a blog through Dr. Markley's blog, which will help to update the community on our work as well.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right.
All right. Superintendent Ford, anything I really have to report is that I will not be making a recommendation for a makeup day. There is no way that I can fit it into the calendar to, to make up May first, so we will just.
I can hear tears in the background on that one. Okay, is that it?
That's it.
Okay. Board chairperson's report, item A, CTEC bill. The only thing I want to report on that is that several of us moved, went up, moved, went up to Raleigh to speak at, in front of the education committee, subcommittee of the House in support of the bill, and I'm happy to say that the bill passed unanimously through that committee. It is now sitting, I believe, in appropriations. And, you know, the, the tide changes with the wind, so you never know. But we're, we're hopeful that we'll, we'll still, we'll still receive a favorable. I don't know what to say about it.
Favorable outcome.
Favorable outcome, there you go. But we're, we're, again, I want, I always want to extend my, our appreciation to Representative Davis for his hard work, and his staff for his hard work on that bill. You know, CTEC is a, a great, great treasure for our, our district, and we definitely want to support it, so. Item B, Isaac Barley College High School Building. We've had some great conversations with UNCW. Things are really moving in a positive direction, I think, for maybe the first time. And Chancellor Sartorelli, I think, just recently drafted a letter back to Representative Butler, and again, kind of reiterating his support of, of getting behind the building and getting behind land for the building on UNCW's campus. So I think all the players are, are on the court, and we're moving in the right direction. Anything you want to add, Dr. Markley?
No, I guess, as you said, it was very positive. It's going to take some moving pieces to get it there. Nothing's really set in stone yet, but it was a good conversation.
The hurricane, did they say that it might have an impact on slowing down the possible progress, or did that come up at all? Because they're doing so much rebuilding over it.
They've got a lot of rebuilding to do. A lot of it depends upon looking at finding, is potentially looking at some land and then looking at some, at future, the funding source becomes a discussion down the road.
It's kind of getting everyone's agreement to, to have us work together and to kind of come up with some maybe innovative ideas on, on how we're going to, not only, the, the land piece is not as big of a deal, it's the building piece.
That's our call if that works that way.
We'll, some discussion about working outside the normal university funding process, which can be a decade-long process sometimes.
And we're, we're hoping to, well, we're, we're definitely going to be moving that along. But yes, certainly the hurricane impacted those discussions. You know, UNCW was, was really decimated. But I think that we can, we've come up with some ideas. We, we met with several people on the UNCW campus. We've met with Chairman Sartorelli. Again, I think that those conversations were really positive, and that's the biggest thing. Having that relationship, I think, and, and doing, doing that relationship building is really important. So I think they're taking ideas back to, to their board of trustees and talking some things over, so.
Good.
Yeah, that's good.
I was just going to say, if any of us that run into any of our representatives in the course of, whenever, be sure and thank them.
Oh, yeah, I do.
Yes, they are. They are.
Hardworking people.
And same with UNCW. When you run into people at UNCW, make sure to thank them for their partnership. And same with UNCW, when you run into people at UNCW, make sure to thank them for their partnership. Um, because this is not the only thing that they've got going and we need to recognize that. Um, but this is not the only partnership we have with them. So there are a lot of things that, that, that we have going on together, so some recognition of that is important. And that's it, I'm done. Uh, item number twelve, committee reports, does anyone have any committee reports they would like to discuss?
I've heard from Paulsy, I think that was the only one that's met since the last meeting.
All right, uh, item thirteen, consensus items, item A, personnel appendix. Aye, Dr. Wilmers?
Thank you, ma'am chair, would request the board approve the personnel matters as presented in a very small font. We couldn't get it to fit on the page like it normally does, I apologize, and we'll get it bigger next time.
Move forward.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is approved. And congratulations on the grandbaby, Dr. Wilmers.
Oh, congratulations.
Congratulations.
I sing on the cake of life. Oh, that's a beautiful.
Moving on to, yeah, moving on to item number B, Budget Amendment Number Eight, Appendix J, Mary Hazel Small.
Thank you, there are several amendments listed, but the significant one that I want to point out is a transfer bond, housing savings and contingency, totaling two point three million to cover the cost of right to be elementary additions that came in over budget.
Came in what?
Over budget.
Came in over budget. Projects at the front end came in under budget, the projects at the back end are coming in over budget. It's a matter of inflation.
Balancing?
Yeah.
Good.
So we're just shifting them from the front end to the back end, they're still under the amount of the total bond.
All right. Do I hear a motion?
Second.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is approved. Item C, change of school assignments, Appendix K, Dr. Holliday.
Madam Chair, request that the board approve the release of these students that are listed to the adjacent school district because their parents are employed by those school districts, this is a routine request.
Motion approved.
Second.
There's a motion in a second, uh, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is approved. Moving to old business.
Item B.
Right, item B. Two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, proposed county budget request, Appendix M, Mary Hazel Small. Dun, da, da.
I request the board's approval of the budget recommendation based on a counter plus of twenty-nine hundred per pupil with operating budget and keeping the county capital, capital outlay request at last year's level of three million six hundred ninety-six thousand. The total request is eighty-five million, three hundred and three thousand nine hundred fifty-two dollars and it's an overall three point four percent increase from the prior year. The, the estimates are based on the House salary, but the most recent salary House budget. And information from the House budget, excuse me, and um, that allowed us to reduce the, the request just a bit per pupil.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
I do want to note that this um, request was the result, and this amount was the result of a lot of hard work on both the county commissioner's side and our side. As everyone knows, our county was hit hard by the hurricane. And that hit um, our fund balance hard. It hit the county commissioners, the commissioners' fund balance very hard. And in spite of that, um, the commissioners have committed to supporting our schools and raising our, well, actually, Mary Hazel, do you want to go over just kind of briefly what this will allow us to do in this next school year?
Certainly. The um, most of the changes related to salary, because we are, most of our salaries are sort of contingent on what the state does. But the salary and benefit increases that for the state were just over almost one point two million. We also had increases in the benefit rates for our retirement match and hospitalization that were included in that. It also includes a new special education teacher supplement of a hundred dollars per month. It's hard to, hard to fill, um, positions. The, it includes additional funding to try to get our minimum non-certified salary schedule to thirteen dollars per hour with a goal over three years to get to fifteen dollars per hour, is what we discussed. There are also just some, some basic cost increases for utilities, about a half a million due to a four percent rate increase. Um, and some new facilities that were opened this year. Some new position, three new custodians for C-Tech as we transition them to a new building this year. Currently, the custodial services are provided by Cape Fear, but they won't in the new building. There is a hundred thousand to, we've been for several years trying to bring our custodian, all of our custodial positions back to twelve months, so continuing that process. Offsetting some prior year revenue shortfall that we had funded with fund balance, but now that our fund balance is depleted and we have to, to include those in continuation funding. Built into this, in addition to what we are asking for an increase, we also, many of these items were funded with savings that we identified during the budget process. So we repurposed items where we could and then are requesting that the actual county increase for us in terms of the operating budget would be just over one point six million with another estimated, almost a million going towards charter schools because they have greater growth estimated for this year. And trying to think if there's anything else. There's also, um, part of what the state is recommending is to delay the implementation of raises to January first and that allows us to do some one-time items related to some training and curriculum, all of that kind of thing, so. That we have a little bit of flexibility because of the delay in the salary implementation from the state. So once again, that's not approved yet, that's the House budget's approved, we don't, we don't know what the Senate's going to do, but that's our best estimate at this point in time.
Um, I do want to thank my fellow board members for their discussions with our county commissioners. I think it's safe to say that um, we've had really great communication with the commissioners and I, I think that that will continue. I know that that was their wish, that we, we do have increased communication and earlier communication than we've had in the past. And so um, I, I, we definitely need to do that and I think all of us need to be on board with that. So we can understand, you know, they can understand where, where, where our budget is going, we can understand where theirs is going and, and, you know, we can continue to work together to make this district the best it can be, so.
Can I, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Trying to clarify, so we, this, what we're about to move on proposal is for the request for an increase from the county. But it's not actually approving the budget itself, that just happens automatically year to year or?
No, what'll happen process-wise is we're requesting an amount from the county commissioners. That would be the one point something million dollars that would come to us. They will then approve the dollar amount and then, once we have the House and Senate budgets, we'll come back to you. Once we have the House, Senate and local budget, local dollars, we'll come back to you for a final budget approval. So what we're approving tonight is the amount that we're requesting from the county. And we're telling you our plan on how we would spend that, based on the information we have now. Once we have a House budget, I mean, once we have a state budget, then we can give you a finalized uh, budget of how those dollars will be sent. We'll know the amount, not, we won't know every line item in there at this point.
So this means that the budget could change. The amount of money is all we're asking for tonight.
Correct.
So there is still possibilities for other things that we've discussed about the budget to occur.
Yeah, if we, if for some reason with the House budget comes in, or the state budget comes in different than what we're anticipating, then yes, obviously there will be changes. We don't expect the Senate budget will look exactly like the House budget and that the final budget will look the same.
Oh, I'm talking about local spending too.
And that's impacted directly by, by what happens with the state budget as well.
But, but we are not approving the final budget until a later date after we get more information about where the funds are coming from.
Correct.
So things can still possibly shift around if they're requested.
Yes, some things can shift.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd also just like to add my thanks to the commissioners, I think it's important to note good work and it's really hard to sit in New Hanover County and argue that our commissioners don't do everything they can to support education in this county. I mean, they went from twenty-two hundred dollars in two thousand nine to, I mean, now we're looking at potentially getting up to twenty-nine hundred. In ten years, I know we had a lot to do because of the recession, but um, I'm appreciative, I think they've done a good job.
Plus a bond next year.
And one in two thousand fourteen, right?
Correct. All right, I would request a motion on the, pardon?
We have a motion.
We do?
We do.
Oh, sorry, all right. So any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. And again, many thanks to the county commissioners for this funding. Item number C, redistricting guiding principles, Eddie Anderson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As, as everyone's aware, we're beginning the redistricting process for elementary and middle schools and which would go into effect for the twenty twenty, twenty-one school year. Um, we had presented um, a draft or some examples of guiding principles for the board retreat and um, we're presenting tonight the final version that, that we believe you decided on and agreed to at the retreat. We're presenting that tonight for your approval.
Is this the time when we're looking at this if we want to suggest actual additions or subtractions? Or, I mean, this is what we talked about, but at the time we had the fifty percent of free and reduced economic integration written down. We'd come to that conclusion, fifty percent was most advantageous to our schools?
I don't think we came to that conclusion.
Well, we were talking about, that's what I mean, so would this be the time now to add it or if?
This is the list that was, came out of the, your retreat discussion. So at this point, you as a board approved this and you would, if you want to make additions or deletions from this, that would be up to you as a board.
I think percentages would come into what the committee does and what Cropper does.
Oh, that's right, that's, that was part of the, okay, I'm trying to.
That was part of the discussion.
These are good.
Move to adopt.
Second.
All right, is there any other discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, I would note that during the retreat that um, there is no mention of neighborhood schools on there and um, it is my understanding that, you know, there's a lot of these things directly contradict, you either have neighborhood schools or you don't have neighborhood schools. I know, um, we've had board members that have said, you know, don't be afraid of busing and all this, but this is an absolute move away from neighborhood schools. We discussed that in, in the budget meeting. Um, it's very clear, based on these guiding principles, that we are no longer using, even using the word neighborhood schools anymore. Um, and it's clear that, that these principles show a, a clear move away from that model. And I believe that this community has traditionally supported neighborhood schools, continues to support neighborhood schools and, and I don't think that this is, um, these principles necessarily reflect what, what our community has, has asked us to do.
Well, wouldn't the last thing address that, David? Close proximity?
Proximity, yeah.
Yeah, well, I know you said, uh, yeah, and, and if you read it though, it says students should be assigned to the school within the closest proximity to their homes where possible.
Yeah.
So what that does is that leaves, leaves the gap to really, to really start moving, moving kids around. And Judy, I know you here were talking, you're the one that's been saying busing the whole time.
I'm not saying busing, I'm not sure what gap you're referring to.
The ability to move kids to other schools, I mean, you're talking about percentages, you just said percentages and that has to do with moving kids around to make sure your percentages are right, is that, is that not accurate? How do you get percentages? You move kids around to make your percentages.
All the, the kids are bused.
The fact of the matter is, is, is we have, I mean, we've moved away from neighborhood schools.
Kids are bused all the time, I mean, I'm not sure what you mean.
And you're exactly right, kids are bused all the time and that, and that's not what this community has wanted. They want kids to go to their, to their neighborhood, to their closest school.
Are they walking?
I don't, I don't care if it's in middle school, if it's one of these suburban schools. Um, I'm just saying, this, this absolutely moves away from, from the neighborhood's concept and I don't have any problem if that's what this board wants to do, but I at least want um, everyone to be very clear that, that this does move away from the concept. I would like to have something in here that said neighborhood schools.
The only thing that I was saying, David, and I'm not arguing with you, is if you've got a school that's got enough seats for seven hundred people.
Yep.
When you run out of seven hundred, the kids are not going to be able to go there, they're going to have to go somewhere else.
You, and you are one hundred percent right, there, there are places in our district where the populace is centered. You know, whether it be, you know, thinking about the Ogden area, you can only go so far away because the school fills up. Um, but the fact is, is I, I don't believe that these um, these criteria that we're, that we're, we're looking at right now acknowledges that. What they're doing is they're actually um, using different methods of actually getting the kids to their schools. Now, I would agree with you, what you're saying.
And, and what you were, the, the, some of the things we were talking about with the schools next year uh, that you brought up in the retreat would address that.
Yeah, I, I, and I understand that, I'm just saying that from my personal standpoint, um, I, I think that it's important to acknowledge that we are still looking at a neighborhood school concept. That, that's what I'm saying and I, and I believe that it was intentionally left off the sheet so we don't throw that, that concept out there anymore. So that's, that's all I'm saying, I agree with the, I agree with what you're saying, Bill, I agree with, in a neighborhood school.
I think what these principles do is try to get us to a compromise point. And I don't think it's helpful really to say, look, you know, no more neighborhood schools and, and, you know, I feel like that's,
Not saying.
That's going to poison the well before we even test the water.
Well, we made, we made a specific point in the retreat, I mean, I hear what you're saying, but we made a specific point in the retreat not to use the word neighborhood schools. So when you say that I'm poisoning the well, we, or, or a majority of the board made a specific point to take that word out.
Sure. Well, we were talking about proximity being the same thing, you know.
Let's put neighborhood schools there, if it's the same thing, let's put neighborhood schools.
But I think we also acknowledge that neighborhood schools means different things to different people.
It certainly does, there's no way you can define it.
We're not trying to achieve neighborhood schools because for seven people, we have seven different interpretations of what that means. Close proximity gives the community.
The last two words, the last two words where it says where possible.
Yeah.
That takes care of all of it right there.
Yeah.
What?
That takes care of all of it, I mean, we're going to do our best.
No, that, that, to me, that gives, gives you an L, that where possible gives an L.
Well, maybe it's perception.
That actually gives you language, it's like, instead of a may versus shall.
Even if you put neighborhood schools as opposed to close proximity?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, I, I think that um, this community recognizes what the neighborhood school concept is. I believe that there are some things we absolutely can do to make our schools more equitable. But at the same point, I also know that this community has routinely, um, you say that there's a difference in opinion of what neighborhood schools is, but this, this community has been very clear about what they want. You know, we, we sat through this process through high schools, through Williston, through Ashley, Williston several times, Holly Shelter and Tua T, we got multiple, you know, we got a thousand different emails and Tua T, all of that are, a vast, vast majority of them did not want their kid be moved away from the school that was closest to them. So much so that when we started moving around Noble and, you know, we were looking outside the one and a half to two mile radius, people that were just outside that were like, we've always gone to Noble, that's the school that I want to go to. And we decided to move them to, to, you know, there were proposals to move them to other ones. So I'm just making, making it clear that this board um, has decided to take that word, that neighborhood school word out of this. Um, and I do believe that it opens up the ability to start moving many more kids around, that's all I'm saying.
If it means that our schools are going to be more successful by doing so, I think that's important. And we know through the research that by having more equitable
You keep talking about.
Opportunities, it's going to raise our schools that are failing and, and all of our children will benefit. If we're doing what's best for kids based
-opportunities, it's going to raise our schools that are failing and, and all of our children will benefit. If we're doing what's best for kids based on these guiding principles, then I'm okay with that.
So you're okay with not having the neighborhood schools?
Correct.
Okay. That's, that's what this is. I mean, now, now, I mean, and I don't have any problem again, but we've spent the last couple of minutes arguing that we're still doing neighborhood schools, but at least now we have people saying they're not, they don't want the neighborhood schools. You know, we, we keep always talking about research does this and research does that, but the fact of the matter is about the kids. And putting, you know, moving kids farther away from the school that's closest to them, which is my understanding of what some of us want to do, doesn't necessarily help those specific kids. There's some things that I think we can do with some of those, continue to work with some of those schools that are lower performing. I mean, my kid goes to one of those lower performing schools and he succeeds.
Well, it's a great school.
It is a great school, but it's still one of the low performing.
But there's a lot of diversity in that school. There's a lot of equity in that school.
You know, I mean-
My grandson goes there and that school's a, I wish we had more schools like that. And there's a couple that definitely aren't and they need that opportunity.
When, when we got on the board, we were confronted with a problem where we had overcapacity at some of our schools, undercapacity at other schools. And if you don't have that where possible in there, and you don't have close proximity in there, and we have a strict adherence, the children will go to the school that is closest to them, you're going to have an imbalance in terms of capacity.
And that's, and that's, you know, and that argument doesn't make-
And all of these are kind of in, in conflict with one another.
You make, you say that we have undercapacity schools and, and, and that's something that if you weren't on the board, I understand the argument, but being on the board, you should understand that we look at some of those undercapacity schools and those schools that you're talking about are going to be your Freeman and be your Snipes, right, that are undercapacity?
Sure.
Right.
Holly Shelter as well.
Right. And we're moving them for the middle, and that's a middle school issue because that's a new school with a new development. But we're, you know, people use the word Snipes and Freeman about the undercapacity. And we've talked about that as, as a board and I know I've spoken to Dr. Markley about it, and there's reasons why they're undercapacity. Because those issues that go on in those schools are much different than some of the other, other issues. So keeping those schools at undercapacity is extremely important. Not simply just filling up those schools just to say that we can cram eighteen kids in, in their first grade class.
Keeping them under-
You're referring to class size?
Yeah, class size is only one small factor. But if you've got a school that's more equitable and the kids have the opportunity to be in a successful environment, then you don't need those small class sizes.
Oh, I disagree with that. You still have individual children who have to have-
Right.
Specialized attention.
Yes.
That, that should be countywide. That should not be just focusing on one school.
When we did, when I first came back to the system, we had numbers and I was at Alderman. And from several years, we'd, we'd get another rotation of children. And they would say, okay, here come the so-and-so children. We got used to them and then they shifted the numbers again to balance out. When I went to Freeman to visit years ago, I spoke with the principal and we had started the neighborhood school concept. And I said, how is it working? And she said, unfortunately, the children that have been, and she used the word farmed out to these other schools are behind the children that we've been working with.
How long ago?
And what happened was they didn't have the concentrated services that we provide right now.
That's not a good environment for children to learn.
I, I'll give an opposite example of that. I talked to a gentleman who's around my age. He went to a predominantly white school and he grew up in Rankin Terrace. Half of the students went to Williston where he came from, half of the students went to Noble. He was one of the ones that went to Noble. And he told me he would not be where he is professionally had he not had the opportunity to see how other people live. The kids that had gone to Williston that were from Rankin Terrace had, they saw the same thing every day. Being around people that are different than you is just good for all of us. We learn how different people function, how different people think. It's what the world needs. Our schools need to be more diverse. They need to have the experience to work with kids that are different than themselves, whether it's race, whether it's LGBTQIA, whether it's disabilities. Our kids are all humans. We have to let them experience other humans.
And you made the statement about studies. Studies prove it. You can say all you want about, well, don't listen to studies, but that's not what we're supposed to be doing for our kids. We're supposed to be listening to the information that shows that that is the best way for children to learn in a diverse environment. It helps all levels of kids.
You're supposed to be lis, you're supposed to be representing the community that represents-
I absolutely am. I'm representing our kids.
No. Okay, that's fine. I just want to make sure that we're very clear where we stand on, on the neighborhood school concept. And I'm voting against this because this does not represent the neighborhood school. It's very clear to me that, and I'm glad we had this conversation because now we, we understand who is for that concept and who is not for that concept.
I have never made it a mystery that I care about the kids.
This conversation. What?
I've never made it a mystery. I put the kids first.
You never made a mystery of what, that you're not-
That I put the kids first.
We don't need to have that discussion, Judy.
I mean, it's very-
I think it's, I think it's really a shame that you characterize it. Nobody else does, Judy. I think we all do.
Oh, I know you do. I do. I agree. I, I know we're all doing that. We're working on it.
I think we have a difference of opinion here on what constitutes close proximity versus neighborhood schools. And that language came from, what was it? Carrabas?
Carrabas County.
Carrabas County. Carrabas. Uh, Carrabas County.
Not a restaurant, I'm not certain.
It was my understanding at the retreat, Dr. Markley, that you were going to send this out as a draft and we were going to be able to study it and it wasn't going to be presented tonight.
No, when I went back and looked at the notes, you wanted it on the agenda to approve it so the wiki, so that the, so they could start work-
And I thought it was going to be in IPAC at Thursday. I thought that's what we were-
I thought that's what we were going to do, too.
Now, Thursday, I think is the, was the committee assigned? I don't, I don't, I mean-
I thought the committee-
Thursday was, yeah, Thursday-
Thursday was the bond.
Yeah.
The revised bond list.
I thought, I thought, I remembered the way you stated that it was supposed to be.
It actually wasn't on the agenda.
We asked specifically, do we need to approve these? And you said yes.
Said yes.
And you couldn't wait another month to, until the June meeting because the, because the consultant needs to get, needs to get going.
Okay. All right. So.
Have we got?
Do we have a motion?
Can, can we change some of the wording?
This is, this is your document. This is a, this is a-
Well, we had those examples put and up there ranked and, and I didn't realize how intense some people were in numbers rather than, uh, what the majority of the people in this county want for their children.
I mean, if we're in, if, if we agree that so many of these things are in conflict or contrast to each other, which I think we can all agree, right?
Absolutely.
Why can we not put neighborhood schools there? If it's in conflict to everything-
What are you saying? You don't want to change the language? Neighborhood schools, students should be assigned to the school within the closest proximity to their house where possible?
We can use the, the same language we, we previously have for neighborhood schools.
What was that language?
Board makes a commitment to have neighborhood schools as whatever, whatever it was, as part of their, um, whatever these-
I actually have it here. It says, the Board of Education is committed to maintaining neighborhood schools. Attendance own boundaries should minimize change for students.
That needs to be in them.
I feel like this is the same exact, I mean, it's just, almost every word's synonymous. Where possible.
Mm-hmm.
But why are we making it-
Read the last part again, please.
The why we're trying to make-
The last part is the minim, if you do the one, fourth bullet, that's the last part. Minimize.
To minimize the amount of student impact.
So why, why are we so intent of taking the word neighborhood schools out?
Because it's so nebulous. Like I said, I think everybody's-
I think it creates an expectation among this community that no matter what, you will be going to the school where you are closest to.
And that's what that-
I think that's what, I think that's what neighborhood schools are.
We've shown that's not true, though. I mean, because we did that in, in high schools.
We, we, as we've shown, but when people hear it, they hear a certain thing.
I, I feel like as a board, we've been trying to establish ourselves as a new board, right? We're trying to separate ourselves from the board that has been here and, and established for a very long time.
I'm not trying to stop, I'm not trying to separate myself from anyone.
Not separate, but I mean, we're, we're, we're-
No, I'm doing, I do what I believe in, y'all do what you believe in. That's our job. I don't care what happened in the past. And that's one of the biggest problems I think we have right now is we're so focused on the past that it just, it clouds our future. I know we can learn from a lot of those things that happened in the past, but I'm, I'm not trying to separate myself from any, any past board. I'm doing what I think's right.
And, and that's fine and I respect that, but I do think that neighborhood schools in this community is, is a painful term for a lot of people for various reasons.
Not for a vast, I, I, and there, and you may know other people, but not for a vast majority. Because I went through the entire Williston thing and we sat in Williston and you know that the, that the vast, vast, vast majority of the people that were arguing against changing Williston said, because we don't want you to take our downtown middle school away, we want to go to our neighborhood school. That was the biggest argument that we got from students, that we got from the Williston Alumni Association. Stephanie, you, you were on the board with me. That was the biggest argument. They wanted that school. I'm not saying that we can't do things to, to support some of those schools because they need support. We had those discussions, you and I, over and over and over. But I don't care if it's the Williston community, I don't care if it's the Wrightsville Beach community, or the Parsley community, or the Alderman community, because that's where I go. They want those schools that are close to their house. And everyone has made that clear.
Well, who's, you're, you're very broad brushing the whole county and everybody in it. We don't know that. I hear plenty of the opposite. I hear a lot of the opposite. Where so much of the damage that had been done to so many of the kids is because of the, of the way this school district is districted now.
Judy, I, I understand that you hear that from some people, but I, 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 I don't believe that when you tell me that you hear that from a lot of people.
I do. Oh, my goodness.
Stephanie sat with me in the Williston thing. And I know there were other issues as well.
I'm not referring just to Williston.
Other issues as well, but that, that is the biggest thing that we heard. Don't take the downtown school away from us. Is that not right, Stephanie?
They were-
I mean, again-
I think they were afraid of losing the history of the school and they didn't see the need for the hearts.
But they wanted to say, they wanted to say to go, they wanted to go to that school, right?
And it was changed, talking about changing it to a specialty school, which is a whole nother animal. They wanted to keep their community school in the sense that it was still the, the downtown middle school. But they were also talking about making that school more diverse. I heard that a lot during that conversation. That was the reason that Williston struggles because it doesn't have enough diversity. So they want to make it more equitable also on that level. So this is part of the redistricting.
So how, how are you?
When they bring this back to us, can we tweak it?
This is, this is where a pretty-
These are guidelines.
Well, the, yeah, the purpose in presenting it tonight is for the final approval, approval so that we can give this to the consultant to get started.
But, I mean, when he brings that back to us, is it sentence name?
He brings you a recommendation.
A recommendation.
And you as a board, accept the recommendation, modify the recommendation, or reject it outright.
Okay. These are the principles that will be on our website.
Yeah.
That indicate that all of us are in favor of. Why can we not take minimize impact of students, the close proximity, take those two, combine them and go back to the original principle that, that Mr. Anderson just read? That says the same thing.
Because neighborhood schools represents the segregation of our schools in New Hanover County.
Absolutely.
That is what it is.
And it-
That is what people feel.
Absolutely.
And we cannot, we cannot say that, that we're okay with that.
But you're saying-
At least we're not, yeah, we're, at least-
Close proximity.
Then leave close proximity.
But why camouflage?
But you don't really mean that.
I like close proximity. That's a good word and that's what we're going to try to do.
We just said, we just said, close, you just said, close proximity means the same thing as neighborhood schools.
I didn't-
When we ask to put, let's just put neighborhood schools there, you say that that represents the racial divide and you're not, you're not okay with doing that because you're for students.
I'm concerned about the term and the connotations in the past. I think we need to move forward and this is definitely moving forward in a positive direction.
Uh, when you say positive-
Another positive direction. I'm sorry.
Go ahead, sorry.
No, there's another positive, another positive direction. Now, this conversation is illustrated quite clearly that no matter how we cut the cake, it's going to taste like crap. Nobody likes to move students. I don't either. But what I can't stand more than that is just the negativity and the suspicion and the hostility. Every single person up here has got a, you know, I mean, we should be understanding of the fact that everybody wants to do what is best for our children. That's why we're having an argument. That's why we're having a heated discussion, not because people are like, nah, whatever. Or let's just, yeah, I mean, everybody here cares. And as a board, it is going to be really important as we move forward with this process to respect each other.
No, so that's fine. We can do the political speaking. Let's, I'm, we're trying to have a, I, I understand what you're saying and I appreciate what you're saying. But I, I'm, let's, let's get to the meat of the bones. And I appreciate what, I, I understand what you're saying.
I'm, I'm fine with this language.
And I move to, oh, I'm sorry, did you want to make an amendment? Did you have an amendment to these?
Well, I'm just saying, combine those two bullets and, and have that-
If they're going to all, if they're all going to contrast, if all of them are going to semi-conflict with each other, why not, why not, I would make, I would make a motion to amend this to include the past neighborhood schools' language that would basically combine bullet four and bullet six.
And I second that motion.
There's a motion and a second for the amendment. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.
No.
All right. I just, that's fine. Yeah, I just want to make it clear where everyone stands on how we're going to move forward with, with redistricting. And to me, it's very clear that we're, we had the opportunity to, to vote on it and now we can, the public knows exactly where we stand on neighborhood schools.
Chair, may I have the vote, please? The vote was Jeanette, David, and Bill.
Move to adopt the guiding principles.
I second.
There's a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No.
The three noes?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. It is approved.
There's one more item and with redistricting, the redistricting committee. We presented a draft of the redistricting committee and just, we, we'd like an official approval of that committee, but just to give you a quick update, I have left a message for county planning and I think that their involvement, they may not be at every meeting, but they would be more of a resource to us and a resource to that committee. If the committee requested, they may attend, but I think it's important to have them there as a, as a resource. The community representative and parent representative, I have talked to Matthew Cropper. He doesn't have a, they have, they have gone through an application process on past projects. He doesn't have a process per se, but he is sending me a, a draft application that we could use and that we could put on his, or, or our website and, and, and have people apply. And, and he recommended that, that either him or Dr. Markley or both be involved in the, or do the selection.
I would say that we decided not to have Krista and Ron on. We were going to ask-
Yeah, I couldn't remember which-
Jackson, you said. You were going to Jackson.
Okay. And-
Yeah, we wanted, we wanted like Jackson Norville as the, or in addition to Krista, but, but definitely we wanted, uh-
We don't need, yeah, we just need one ele, one elementary.
So replace Krista Holland with Jackson Norville?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, I'm seeing an awful lot of central office staff on there. What about people out of the schools? For example, administrative assistant. I mean, I'm just looking at it just straightly.
Ms. Wilks actually provides support to the committee, administrative support.
Okay.
Uh, Mark Clarkson is in the bus garage. It's Tim's. He does our bus systems and our, our planning there. Anita is our technology person who helps us get all this stuff up and running. Some of them are there because more for support than-
And, and they have the expertise that's needed.
All right, thank you.
I, I have remembered from trying to go through my notes on, we had talked about a teacher. Is that still something that the board would want to add?
When, when do they usually, if, I mean, if a teacher would like to be a part of it, sure, but I know how the workload is for teachers. So unless a, a teacher can commit to attending regularly, I don't, you know, I don't want to overload an already overloaded schedule. So unless, does the board have an issue with a, a teacher being a part of it?
I think it's a great idea.
Well, they certainly can contact the principals and share the cons- Well, they certainly can contact the principals and share the concerns about, from their school.
I'll talk to Kristy Howe. She's the uh, our regional teacher of the year and her schedule as a, she's an AIG teacher. So she has a little more flexibility in her schedule than maybe your traditional, regular classroom teacher. When will the first meeting of this committee be? I anticipate this group will come together quickly. We, and then we'll add the community person and the parent person once we've gone through an, an application process. So you'll have a committee that'll start and we'll add to it as, as those members are approved.
All right. So if um, any board member who is interested, uh, if you could email me. And so what did you say that the timeline was?
Eddie, what are you anticipating on first meeting? Uh, Cropper, once they, we've got.
If we could um, finalize the members by the end of the month, we'll be fine.
By the end of the month?
Is there in the process now of gathering data? Am I correct?
We are, we have sent them a lot of data and they have uh, already begun uh, the process. So uh, but it, it, it'll, they won't be ready for that kickoff meeting uh, until June at the earliest.
Okay.
There's a draft schedule uh, that I did provide at the retreat. I just don't have that with me. But uh, we have pinpointed, or started to pinpoint some of the dates and times uh, now.
Any other questions? All right. Moving on to new business, item number B, disposal of surplus property, appendix O. Mary Hazel small.
Thank you. I recommend the board's approval of this listing of surplus property. And no longer necessary or desirable for public school purposes to be disposed of in accordance with public school law. Um, and then we have uh, auction scheduled for May eighteenth at ten o'clock AM. I'm contented on the board's approval.
How, how do you handle that auction? I'm curious.
Say.
How do you handle that auction? I'm curious. How does that work?
How do we handle the auction? We contract with an auctioneer.
Oh, okay.
All right, do I hear a motion?
Moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is approved. Uh, moving on to item number C, CTE, application appendix P. Dr. Dr. Smith?
Yes, would ask the board's approval for the district to make application for career and technical education funding. Um, state and local, excuse me, state and federal for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year.
Sorry.
Second.
All right, there is a motion and a second. Any other discuss-, or any discussion or questions on this? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number D, hard to fill positions, appendix Q. Dr. Welmers?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a very, very quick summary of this. Oh, about, I guess around eight years ago, one of our, in one of our committees, our compensation review committees. Uh, what we did was establish that we had positions in the county that were hard to fill. Uh, either competitively or salary-wise. And so what we established was when we identified that position, we would change it from a um, uh, what we have as a basis of experience, which is you get one year credit for every two years of your experience, outside experience, to a one-for-one credit. So one year of experience equals one year of credit on the step pay scale. And by doing that, we increase the person that we would hire up that pay scale. So these, these positions have always been in that, uh, in that way, a one-to-one for their outside experience. So each year we add and subtract from this list. And I apologize, this year, we were supposed to have red ink on the ones that we added and it came out black anyway, so I'll keep working on that. But the positions we are adding to the list, under facilities and operations is energy manager. And under finance, uh, Mary Hazel is, has been trying to replace quite a few of her finance folks. And that, uh, at three percent and, uh, other people hiring, we're just falling behind in being able to attract uh, the good folks you need. So we're, we're including them on the list. That's the accounting, budget analyst, budget specialist, financial analyst and payroll specialist. There's no change in maintenance operations. Under special education, we, we're now having trouble with finding a bra list and an educational interpreter three, uh, and in technology, a land administrator. So we are proposing to add these folks to the list, or bring the list each year. And they would then move to a one-to-one experience credit rating, which gives them a better outside experience credit than, than the one to two that we normally do with other folks.
Is this like a permanent list of, of, or this is, this is the request for now, you've added some things to, but this is you, the usual list that you usually come up with for each year?
Yes, ma'am. It's, it, it, it doesn't change a tremendous amount year to year, uh, but, but sometimes it, we add about this number.
Okay.
And sometimes we take off.
Okay.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Uh, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is approved. Item E, change order to CMAR agreement for Wrightsville Beach Elementary School additions and renovations, appendix S. Eddie Anderson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, the Board of Education in March of twenty eighteen approved the construction management at-risk agreement with Montith Construction Corporation. Um, this is for the additions and renovations at Wrightsville Beach Elementary School, uh, which is um, the last project in our current twenty fourteen bond program. Um, over the past month, we have received all bids and um, as the um, budget transfer that you previously approved, um, would, would say we were over budget. Uh, fortunately, we had anticipated that and um, we had uh, saved money on many of the uh, projects in, at the beginning and uh, were able to fund that within the bond program. So tonight, we're asking you, uh, this, this is a change order and not an award of the contract, but we're asking you to approve the change order. The change order is actually an amount of uh, two million, two hundred and eighty-two thousand, four hundred and forty-nine dollars. It will establish the guaranteed maximum price for the project at eight million, two hundred and sixty-one thousand, five hundred and thirteen dollars and authorize Montith Construction Corporation to proceed with the work.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Is this just because of increased construction costs mainly?
Um, I think that our initial cost estimate was a little low, to be honest with you. And on this particular project, um, it's a very, it's a very complex project. Um, so I think our initial cost estimate was a, a little low compared to our cost estimates on all the other projects. But um, we are seeing um, the, a, a big increase in construction costs right now. The last new school we bid was a hundred and seventy-nine dollars a square foot. Um, I was looking up some information today. Uh, the average cost for schools across the state is now up to two hundred and thirteen dollars a square foot. Uh, I think it has a lot to do with uh, availability. Uh, contractors are busy, especially in this area. You know, a lot of people, a lot of, lot of, uh, you, a lot of uh, public and private businesses are still recovering from the storm.
All right, that's so good news. Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is approved. Item F, easement to Duke Energy Progress LLC for Wrightsville Beach Elementary School, appendix T. Eddie Anderson?
Thank you. Uh, this is also for Wrightsville Beach Elementary School. We've worked with uh, Duke Energy and the new design. Um, this is an uh, standard easement that will allow them to um, construct and operate and maintain the permanent electrical service and sight lighting once the project's complete.
All right. Is there a motion to approve item F?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is approved. Item sixteen, correspondence. Is there any correspondence? Any board member would like to share? Hearing none. Move on to announcements. The New Hanover County Board of Education will hold a, hold a Title IX meeting on Monday, May thirteenth at three thirty PM in the Board of Ed Center. Um, right here. New Hanover, uh, item B, New Hanover County Board of Education will hold a special meeting on Tuesday, May fourteenth at four thirty in the Board of Ed Center. The only item on the agenda is a closed session pursuant to North Carolina general statutes. One four-three dash three eighteen eleven A one and one fifteen C dash three nineteen and three twenty-one. The New Hanover County Board of Education will attend Isaac Bear Early College High School graduation ceremony on Wednesday, May twenty-second to, two thousand nineteen at six thirty PM at the Kenan Auditorium on the campus of UNCW. The New Hanover County Board of Education will attend the Wilmington Early College High School graduation ceremony on Saturday, May twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen at Cape Fear Community College Fine Arts Center. The regular, next regular meeting of the New Hanover County Board of Education is scheduled for Tuesday, June fourth, two thousand nineteen at five thirty PM in the Board of Ed Center. Item eighteen. A German, motion, is there a second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, thank goodness. We are adjourned.